Okay, we'll call this meeting of the City Council to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Brower.
Here.
Mayor Potemperie-Popevsky.
Here.
Mayor Rixby.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We'll proceed to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilman Brower.
Please stand and join me for the invocation. Dear God in heaven, we thank you for the many blessings that you give us. We thank you for the city that we have. We ask that you would give us the wisdom and the understanding to make the decisions that are best for this community this evening. And we thank you for listening and answering our prayer. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any reporting obligations for the closed session?
That was an agency.
Just for agency.
Well, I just, we'll go ahead and, should we convene the RDA? We'll go ahead and just convene the RDA at the same time. Go ahead and, if there's a report from closed session of the RDA.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The redevelopment agency was in closed session as to item C on the agenda, which was a conference with legal counsel regarding litigation identified on the agenda. The board received a report of counsel and information, but no action was taken that needs to be reported at this time.
Okay, back to the City Council. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, this is the time for the oral reports from the public. For any items not on the agenda, I have multiple requests to speak, and I'll call them in the order there in front of me. First is Jeremy Smith.
All right, perfect, thank you. Counsel, appreciate this time. We have AB 1437, the budget bill transparency that I'm addressing. Everyone should have been received packets. Jeremy Smith, on behalf of Assemblyman Mike Morell, he's looking to get as much support as he can from his local City Council members. So, in this packet gives details on exactly what's going on in SAC with that. It allows for any bill that is put up on the floor to have 72 hours' notice before it's voted upon. Mike had the experience of going in Sacramento in his first term, obviously, and realizing that he cannot get through a 400-page document within an hour and a half and then vote on that bill. So this is why he came over this bill and much support as we possibly can get, that'd be greatly appreciated. So any letters would be phenomenal if you could, my card is in there. We're trying to reach out to everyone, and thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. The next is FCS Puerto.
Hello. My name is FCS Puerto. My car was confiscated by a police officer named Mark Goodwin in 2008 without due process. The law requires that when an officer confiscates a car, it should give a citation so that the person can appear in court and resolve it with a judge. This officer didn't do that, and I have had a battle with the county and the sheriff ever since. The county ultimately said that they give immunity to the sheriff, and that is, that is a travesty. And I want to ask the major if he is of the same opinion, because I need a remedy, and I don't have an avenue to a remedy. Thank you.
Yeah, we're unaware of the circumstances surrounding that, and because it's not an agenda item, we can't really deal with it. But it, was, was the car, I just have a question. Was the car confiscated in Loma Linda?
Yes, here at the right page. And I have sent an email and served personally letter to Mr. Tyte. He never responded to it. That's the reason why I'm here today.
Okay. Then I guess we'll just, we'll try to, we'll try to get in contact with you and deal with it. But we can't, we can't deal with it officially as, as the council tonight. The next is a good friend of mine, James Kraus. Welcome to Council Chambers.
Thank you, Your Honor, and counsel, and especially for the reference as a good friend, because you just stole what I was about to lead off with, which was to, to say unequivocally that despite our last somewhat contentious session, there is not an evil person in this room or a person of bad intent. In fact, it's a room, it's obvious that this is a council of, of people deeply committed to public service. But having said that, it is, it is my intent anyway tonight to speak with you and do my very best to help persuade you that, to see things as I and some of my friends see it and believe that we're not on a course of leadership as we should be for this community. Let me say that years ago, I had a brilliant blonde girlfriend who used to try to make the point about people's inability to understand the deferred effects of harms that are accumulated over a long period of time. She used to do that by asking me, "Why don't people smoke dynamite?" And what she meant by that, she wasn't talking about dynamite. She was really asking the question, "Why do people smoke? Why would anyone smoke?" And it was to make the point that if the results were as immediate and as certain and as visible as they really are, I mean, if, if your death was as explosive as smoking dynamite, nobody would do it. But it's not, it's more insidious. Well, the discussion about smoking has largely been won in the public's eye, but it hasn't been with junk food. And I use that term very specifically, junk food. Don't have to define it here and yet, in the same way the Supreme Court doesn't have to define pornography. They said, "Well, we know it when we see it, and we proceed from there." There will be other speakers tonight that will, far more qualified than I, to talk about the public health effects of junk food. And there's the science to back it up, and the harms are clear. But that's at the heart of the problem. It's one of perception, of a recognition that that commodity is as dangerous to the community, to children, and to people, as would be many of the harms, that it is completely legitimate for a body like this to regulate under its police powers. Your charter to regulate for the public health, safety, and welfare are the highest duties and what is behind your power under zoning laws. So I'm going to pretend, since that's not my focus, and the others will make that point, I'm going to pretend for a moment that we were all in agreement that junk food really was as damaging and as dangerous as the science tells us that it is, and move to the issue about the council's ability to do something about it. And I'll do that a little bit metaphorically. There are certainly some other harms that are familiar and could be argued, such as welfare, free enterprise, and the ability to keep property liquid. Why don't we have more pawn shops? They serve a very useful function. And alcohol, I mean, we fought the battle of prohibition a long time ago, but how come there's not a bar on every street in Loma Linda? And what about smoking? Certainly, people's right to choose to smoke, but we could have more tobacco shops. Cigarette vending machines. And as far as exotic dancing and adult theaters, this is just public expression. So, I'm, obviously, I'm being silly, but all of these are examples of choices that adults have and can make, and there's no intent to thwart that completely. But the council has a right to keep the character of this city and to regulate it. And I think the thing that we find the most disturbing is that this community, in a way, is, is being asked to sacrifice its identity on the altar of some misguided libertarian litmus test. And I mean that with all due respect to my friend, the mayor. But that is a risk that, that we take when not exercising that power. So there are ways to do it that don't get us into constitutional waters with things like takings. We don't have due process problems. I know that, that Councilman Daley was rightly so, very concerned with the due process aspects with the last applicant for their, for their project. But looking forward, what we really have is, is drawing lines. Because if you don't exercise that, if we take that libertarian view to its extreme, the community that we have in this country is already well-known. It's called Las Vegas. And I don't cast aspersions on it, I don't even make a value judgment on it. What I'm really talking about is this community. Loma Linda does not have to be Las Vegas. It has the power, the right, even the duty to keep its character. Sometimes the answer to a question like this is right in front of your face. And the one I'm referring to is the Rod of Asclepius. That's the symbol of this town. It's the heart and soul of Loma Linda. You have every right and opportunity to make that real. And if we continue on the path that we are, then I really recommend, I could probably put in some kind of official action to change the symbol. The symbols have power, and it'll be a laughing joke if that wasn't what we live up to. So I thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Are you advocating any future position for the city? Or is this a statement of regret?
When a boxer wants to knock someone out, they usually start with some blows to the midsection to soften things up and tire the opponent. I think what I'm really trying to do here is just set the tone. Because, now, you know that you and I, Mr. Mayor, could go for hours, and this isn't the right forum. But what we're, what I'm really looking at is dependent on two things. One is a true perception that we can rely on the scientists and the public health experts, of which we're fortunate that this community abounds, to come up with that data and say, "How bad is this?" And if we find that it's as bad as smoking or some of these other social ills that I referenced, then the question is, what is the power of this body to do something about it? And that's where I am concerned, that an ultra-libertarian viewpoint that says, "Everyone has the right to choice, it's about choice," negates the fact that it is the community's prerogative to do something about it in what it incentivizes, in what it makes convenient, in what it advocates. And let me add one more thought. All those arguments are valid for adults. They have no bearing for children. Society is absolutely free to, to put bans on children's choices. And we may be, in the future, looking back at tonight and saying, "Oh, it was interesting back then when we were allowed to market fast, I'm sorry, junk food to children." It's the quickest answer I could give you to your simple question.
And I'm still somewhat puzzled about what you're recommending. But I guess maybe your counterparts will, will elucidate that.
Well, I know what I'm not recommending. What will the next fast food restaurant be in Loma Linda? How many, and you'll have every more incentive defined on the basis of fairness and choice, should you receive another application. What will you do then? Going to make the same decision that you just made at the last meeting? I definitely am advocating that we don't do that.
I would guess, based on your advice, the next applicant won't even tell us what fast food joint is coming in, or even if it is a fast food joint, they'll just present the project as presented.
Okay, let's go through in order, Hildamar Dos Santos.
Thank you for the opportunity. And I think we are advocating here for the Healthy City Loma Linda Coalition. And we are, at least, a group of us here, trying to, I cannot answer your question, but we are trying to influence you or make you aware or awake of what's going on in this country that we are missing the boat here. And I'm not going to put negatives now. I will, I'll just mention the opportunities that we are missing, that we have. And I'm going to talk about Blue Zones. In November 2005, the National Geographic magazine published the first article about Blue Zone that included Sardinia in Italy, Okinawa in Japan, and Loma Linda in the United States as places with a high percentage of people living long and healthy and active lives. What has Loma Linda City benefited from that? First, Loma Linda was spotted around the world for this, more than anything else before. What have we done locally to benefit from it? Almost nothing. What are the local activities that promote the Blue Zones here in Loma Linda? Maybe a sign in Loma Linda Market saying, "Blue Zone, buy things here." The Blue Zone Sabbath School in the University Church, that I am in charge, and, and some other activities in Draezon Center. And that's it. Battle Creek in Michigan had the same fortune. There, they discovered the first cornflake at Battle Creek Sanitarium, also an Adventist institution at that time. And they changed the world with their cereal business. Today, the city is still home for the one of the world's biggest food industry, Kellogg's. And they even have the Cereal City, an amusement park and museum that shows the Kellogg's history and origin, all because of a simple cornflake. Some of you might not understand that. But let's go back to Loma Linda, which is the home of a bigger treasure than a cornflake. Loma Linda is the only Blue Zone in the United States, and probably the only Blue Zone in the world, not isolated in an island or in a peninsula. We surely are missing the point and not developing the Blue Zone concept, and not attracting business, not attracting people to live here, and not attracting tourists and investors to come here, and so on. In the spirit of Blue Zone, I, I will recommend or give some ideas here, brainstorming on that. We should have more pathways for exercise. We could invite business like hands-on medical massage that is in Redlands and that could be here in the city. Develop a botanical garden, a lifestyle center, community gardens, a Blue Zone touristic center, a Blue Zone, a Blue Zone market, a museum, and other related businesses. Why don't we have a Blue, why don't we have Blue Zone t-shirts and postcards and souvenirs, and so on? I, I look at your face, you think, "This guy is speaking Portuguese, I'm from Brazil," or Greek, "What is he talking about?" It's just that, I mean, we are missing the boat here. And I don't understand that. The Blue Zone lifestyle is also a way to save money with health insurance and a potential for health business. You don't believe on that, so Google on that. In Iowa, there is a 25 million grant by Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield to find ways to boost residents' physical, emotional, and spiritual health, the Blue Zones Project. Two-thirds of Iowans are obese, and if this project succeeds to prevent the increase of weight in the state, they, they can save $1.6 billion in the next seven years. The project was tested in a model city in Minnesota, Albert Lee. So Google it, and you'll see that. Albert Lee, there was a 49% reduction in healthcare costs for city workers after adopting the Blue Zone lifestyle, the Blue Zone, the Blue Zone concept. I will read words from Iowa's governor, Terry Branstad. "The Blue Zone Project is a community by community, business by business movement that will help Iowa communities make a lasting difference in their health and well-being." Who is at the center of this movement? Dan Bitner, the same person who came to Loma Linda and ordered Blue Zones to figure out this, to figure out the secret of a long and unhealthy life. So they came here, they copy here, and they are developing Iowa. What a potential we have here, to save on health insurance, to help other communities to improve their health by promoting healthy lifestyle, to develop enterprises and get grants to promote the Blue Zone concept, to attract people, tourists, and so on. Why are we missing all of this? And I'll finish with that phrase. "We are sitting on a gold mine, complaining about our FATE, waiting for gold to fall from heaven and trusting on fake golden arches." Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that a little bit. It's, you're welcome to, you may want to respond to something that I'm, I'm going to say. The, to deny the value of being Blue Zone and being a healthy city, to deny that as a value for all of us would be, in my judgment, irresponsible. We all take pride in Loma Linda, and we all want to be a healthy city. In the debate that we had a month ago in regards to the development that was proposed, as has been pointed out, some of us, myself in particular, had due process issues. I believe that led to, in my mind, an ethical imperative. It's not, it doesn't pass the sniff test for me to change the rules after you've been negotiating and collaborating with the development over a long period of time. It's not ethical, it's not appropriate, it's not good behavior. We've had other fast food restaurants that have been proposed and have been objected to, but neither anyone in the community or in, on the City Council that I'm aware of have attempted to, to design a process by which we could define, what is, what do we mean by a healthy city? We all want to be a healthy city, but we may agree or not agree on what constitutes a healthy city. In my mind, we, now is an opportunity to begin to try to define, what is it we mean by a healthy city? I have heard people reference city ordinances in other cities to try to define healthy city. That involve limiting fast food restaurants and so forth. I was even told a couple of weeks ago about a city up in Oregon, I believe by the name of Cannon Beach, that has a city ordinance that doesn't allow any kind of chain stores. Everybody has to be independent. I think that I would like to suggest to my fellow councilmen and to the city staff that we begin to explore a definition of a, what Loma Linda means by a healthy city, and explore what ordinances are out there in other cities that we might be able to learn from. But we do this in a fair and methodical and, and open way, as opposed to try to create new rules after we've been collaborating with one of our local residents who happens to be developing a business venture. So in my mind, this isn't about whether, whether members of the City Council are eagerly supporting fast food restaurants, but I do think there's an issue of fairness in doing this in an appropriate, methodical, and perhaps even scientific way that we can all be proud of, and we can all understand what we mean by wanting to be a healthy city. And that's what I would advocate.
Well, with all the respect that I have for you guys, I, I think our group don't see it. We, I mean, you have an ordinance to not have drive-throughs, and then you just cover that and, and approve that. So this would be something that we should have here. We are trying to invite you guys to go to our Healthy City Conference, and nobody shows up there. And we are developing this for a long time and trying to influence. And it's not, it's not that we are discouraged, but maybe we are, that you guys are not listening to what we are proposing, and that's, and that's the thing. We, the McDonald issue was something for us to, to grasp and something and say, "Well, let's fight with this." But we, we feel, and I'm talking about myself, maybe the other guys can, can answer that. We feel that we are not being listened here. So when we talk, you say, "Well, we are doing that, we are open." And then when we bring the issues, like the McDonald issue, I mean, we, we want to talk in the beginning, we want to talk, we want to participate, and then the thing was postponed. And then the thing was postponed, postponed, postponed. When we present the issue here, "No, it's too late. Don't say anything because now the project is approved." Well, that's what sounded to us, that we are not being listened. And then we have the whole university, the whole research, and then when we present the issues, "Well, forget about that. We are not interested in that. We have to save the budget in the city." We understand that. But we are trying to see if we can help to save the budget with the population because you have money and people are being dead. It doesn't help. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to the conference claim. I got the email for that conference either the night before or the day of of the conference. So I actually had interest prior to that when it was mentioned at one of the other council meetings of actually attending. But I wasn't able to attend because I don't know about my colleagues because we haven't discussed that. But it was very last minute for me. And I don't work inside the university system like most of you do. So maybe I was out of the loop. But personally, in regards to these issues, I'm not getting any communication from anybody in the community on this except for when I sit in the seat. Now, if somebody truly wanted to talk to me about it, I would assume they would reach out via email or a phone call message to the city or maybe actually try to discuss something with me. But increasingly, it is hard for me to sit here and feel like I get beat up because I understand your position and exactly what you just said. You felt like you weren't part of the process, and then when it came down to it, it was too late. For me, I felt the exact same way on the other side. I sat down to make a decision on a development, and I have to consider the development. I could not consider even the word McDonald's in that because the McDonald's was not up in front of us for a decision last month. A development was. So that's my response, is that I agree with my colleagues. I think every single one of us up here, I'm proud. I was at work bragging about Blue Zone stuff for the last several months after it was brought to my attention. That's what we were. And it's neat. I like that. And I'm a very healthy person. But, you know, the system is what it is. And unfortunately, it has to be changed for the future. So I'm very open to any suggestions and things as far as moving forward. But I, you know.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear the other comments, and then I have a suggestion.
There's a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have to respond to a couple of things. I heard the comment at the last meeting. I don't intend to rehash everything, but since it's been brought up tonight by Councilman Daley, the idea of being unethical. I think different policy actions get into interpretation and different viewpoints that I'm sorry I am going to disagree that Council, Mayor Protim, Popescu, and myself, by voting against moving forward with the development were unethical. That's at least, I don't think that's what Councilman Daley is quite saying, but at least that conclusion could be drawn from saying that it's not ethical to not proceed. Let me just give you a couple of examples who I think it's perfectly ethical if we'd have chosen to not go forward. When I first came on this council, there were approvals for two massive developments in the hillsides, and basically was down to just pulling the final grading permits for those to go forward through not just me, but many other individuals' actions. Those were stopped. Was that unethical? I don't think so. I think that was the will of the community. Legal rules were followed, and it was successfully challenged and changed. There have been numerous other developments that we could point out, too, that some landowners, developers felt they had a right to move ahead based on what councils had done. Things changed. Obviously, there are legal guidelines that have to have been followed. At our meeting last week, I enumerated five or six things that I think legally were good reasons that the development could be turned down, specifically the conditional use permit for a drive-through fast-food restaurant. Felt there were those same findings six or seven years ago when a conditional use permit issue came up with the first drive-through fast-food restaurant, and I did oppose that as well. And that eventually was overturned by some legal challenges and by a council election that changed the majority's opinion on that. So I am bothered by at least the potential stigma that it would be unethical to turn something down. I think developers are big boys, big girls, as the case may be. They recognize nothing as final until the final decision. In my speaking with members of the Planning Commission, they felt it was none of their purview to turn down moving forward with this type of project. It was simply to make what was proposed the best architecturally that could be. But my conversations with Planning Commission, they fully recognized it's the council's ultimate decision, and that's what that meeting was about. I respect the majority of my colleagues that approved it, but I do not think it is unethical to, you know, make decisions that may go against what has been proposed and worked on as long as legal rules are followed. And I don't think there was ever a promise that that couldn't happen at that meeting that we had last time. So just want to just say there's a little different viewpoint we all can have, whether something is, quote, "ethical" or not. And I think it's not unethical either way that we look at that issue.
I'm just going to try to make sure that the city council comment is shorter than the public comment.
And that's kind of what I was going to say.
And I apologize for being lengthy.
It looks like the city attorney wants to interject a bit.
I was going to speak on his behalf, but go ahead. You're going to say what I was about to say.
It's always good to remind the public and all of us that under the Brown Act, the city council cannot discuss at any length or take any action upon an item that's not on your agenda this evening. You may respond briefly and give direction to your staff to look into the matter, report back in the future, or to agendize it for discussion in the future. Beyond that, though, we are limited as to what we can do this evening in either acting upon or discussing a non-agendized item.
With that thought in mind, I was just going to make a general statement that in order to allow ourselves to discuss as it further were, you know, some of us are venting and kind of debriefing ourselves, trying to figure out why we made certain decisions. And that's okay, but perhaps it's not the right time and the right forum. So what I would suggest is just let's plan on putting an item on the agenda related to possible, you know, action about future healthy cities. I mean, we come up with any sort of agenda item that would allow us to discuss it and go back and forth with ideas. And at that point, maybe we can go into further discussions. And one recommendation is that there is opportunities for us to regulate certain things, and those things have to follow a general plan, and those general plans can be amended. And then there's a development code that we all have to work, and we're in the process of revising. So there are opportunities for us to further discuss and figure out a way to, you know, for you folks to persuade us as to what you would want us to do. Unfortunately, tonight and at this time is not it. I understand your desire to express, and you're more than welcome to do so. But I just want to make sure that we kind of keep it on the wraps. Mr. Conrad, you have it.
If I can make one and build off your comment. We've been working on the Development Code update that fits the general plan for well over a year. We're getting towards the end of that process, and that's where the rules that govern how we treat projects like that, how we bring them to council, what handles with them are determined. We're in the process of reviewing and updating those. That's probably the right forum for the people that want to influence this, to step forward, then come talk to me. We can bring it before the Planning Commission. We can incorporate those concepts and adopt it as a whole, as rules, going forward. If we're unhappy with the outcome under these rules, that's the ability for us to change the rules. So this has been going on in front of Planning Commission for well over a year. Now's the time to step up, and let's do that. And you're welcome to talk to me after the meeting, anytime in the office, and definitely at Planning Commission meetings.
Okay. The next speaker is Dr. Sylvie Welhausen.
Thank you for your time. I had a question, too. So I suppose it refers to those rules. So when a project is presented, you know, we're told it was too early and then too late. So again, I'd like to know who kind of gave, you know, when you, Mr. Bolwich, gave an interview on a newspaper that basically there was no problem with the project. It was kind of, no matter what noise we would make it on the street, it was going to be adopted. So if that was put in print, who is he representing? The community or the developer? That is my question, because that was in print before the city council meeting and also before the Planning Commission was, you know, pre-approving the project. So I think there is here a conflict of interest.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yes, I do. Not here, but the newspaper was, article is actually online.
Could you provide us a copy of that?
There was a quote that was taken well out of context.
Well, yes, I can. It's from the Press Enterprise. And I think it was back in June or July, but yes. So what my question is, if a developer is giving the unofficial green light and knowing that, you know, conditional permit fee of $580,000 was definitely enough for them, you know, for their project to be approved, I think there is a huge conflict of interest there, too. Meaning, we do have, or you gentlemen, have the muscle to say no to drive-through because it's in our ordinances. So what gives you the right to eschew a lot of conditional use permits? And also, when we were sitting here praising San Luis Obispo about the no drive-through, you just sat there, not even saying that you had the same ordinances for many, many city council meetings. So we didn't know. We didn't go ahead and swallow your whole Loma Linda book. We're just in private practice, or we work, you know. We're not in your shoes. So how come we were not told? I find that objectionable. Also, to allow a conditional use permit, you have to prove a benefit to the community. I thought that was not met at all. Is it health benefit? Is it architectural benefit? No. Is it noise benefit, trash benefit? No. Anyway, that's a, so basically, the proof of greater good was not met. And also, the city council role is to have some knowledge about public health as well as, I understand, architecture, sustainable, at least beautiful architecture, and also the greater good, not the special interest. So when you're talking about not being heavy-handed government, you're basically backing off your powers to let special interests come in against the greater good of the community. So are we talking about heavy-handed or lack of hand? I just wanted to know about future, where we could put an agenda, maybe monthly, about talking about the healthy city communities. So that's a different, to be an agenda for that. And to make a ratio, since they have determined the state of California that the bad restaurant was going to go on the top of the ratio, let's say four to one currently in the state of California. So we have to kind of continue with that bad food being on top and the good food being on the bottom. So we were asking for at least, you know, maybe a one to two ratio, two being healthy food. So maybe that would be in the future and how we can implement that. Because I think we should have more healthy food than bad food. And again, the question on freedom of choice for all the libertarian up there, and we all have some libertarian attitude if it's in one part of our lives or not. So I respect that very much so. But the freedom of choice is different than the freedom of unknowingly harming ourselves. It comes with the knowledge that you are informed about what you're doing. At least cigarettes are labeled. Fast food is not labeled. Again, so that's another point. But again, that will come in the future, hopefully, on agenda items that we'll have about healthy city. Thank you very much.
I would just remind the citizens that the opposite of libertarian is authoritarian or totalitarian. It's not necessarily an advisable thing. Extremes in all things are inadvisable. Next comment is from Juan Carlos Belliard.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again. I go way back at this podium with some of you, actually. With the Save the Hills, we were very passionate about saving our hills and providing an environment for our community. And I think a lot of the elections went according to that movement. And I think we really believed in that. With the specialty hospital as well, I remember there's a lot of passion. There's probably a lot more animosity than there has been around the McDonald's issue. But I do believe, deep in my heart, that everyone around here has the best interest for our community. And I think it's more about perception and how do we go about that. But when you're dealing with a group of public health folks, most people don't go into public health for financial gains. There's usually a lot of passion behind that. And there is also maybe a difference in philosophy when it comes to protecting communities versus individuals. So tonight, I just wanted to show just a few images. We can just show a few pictures. I went out and looked at what would our city look like for somebody who's coming in for the first time. And usually, if you're visiting Loma Linda, you come off the I-10 freeway. And I titled this, again, as my previous presentation, "Loma Linda Needs a Health Vision." And I think the request that we have as a healthy Loma Linda coalition is that we engage. And I think tonight, I do have some hope. And I appreciate Councilman Popescu inviting us to put it on the agenda and to have a dialogue, and also Mr. Bolwich, that we engage in the process of the revision of the general plan. That's what we've been wanting to do. I think the McDonald's issue may be too late. I'm not sure what else is going to happen in the community regarding that. But we are interested in engaging our city leaders in creating a vision for Loma Linda. And when people ask us, "What is your vision for Loma Linda?", that we will have a unified response and a very clear idea of what that looks like. Because without a vision, people perish. If we don't have a vision, we will have special interest groups, and whoever has the most money will form that vision for us. So this is just a few images of what our portals into our city look like. If you can advance. So this is just one of the first impressions of our food environment when you come into the city of Loma Linda. Next slide, please. So this is the Mountain View exit. You have Farmer Boys there. You have a Domino's Pizza. And I hear a lot about choice. And people get up here on this podium and say, "How can you vegetarians legislate or ask the city to legislate vegetarianism and force us to be vegetarian?" Well, I have to admit, I'm not a strict vegetarian myself. And I'm not trying to make everyone else in this audience or in this city vegetarian. But for people trying to live, have healthy choices, and who are not retired and can eat three meals at home, what are our choices in the middle of the day? three meals at home, what are our choices in the middle of the day to grab a quick bite to eat at lunch? We have to go to San Bernardino, like I said before. So this is our Mountain View exit right here, Farmer Boys, Domino's, and I didn't include all of them. Next slide, please. The Waterman exit is not theoretically Loma Linda, but that's another entry point into Loma Linda. So for everyone who was complaining about, well, where are we going to get our, our junk food when we come to Loma Linda? You can't pass, you can't come into Loma Linda without passing options for eating junk food. And this is, I didn't even include the Burger King here, but you have Gus Jr., Taco Bell, McDonald's, Popeyes, Carl's Jr., all clustered there. Next slide, please. The Washington exit, which again is Colton, but people come off at 2:15 into Loma Linda. I couldn't even capture all the, the fast food restaurants at, at that exit. And finally, our, our last slide, which is our main entrance. This is what most people see when they come into Loma Linda. So when we're talking about choice, we're asking for there to be choice for everybody, not just for people who want to eat fast food, and that's, that's our prerogative. But if you don't want to eat fast food, and you can't go to Clark's and, and prepare a home-cooked meal, or the Loma Linda Market, where do you go? And again, we shouldn't have to leave our city to go find that kind of food. And that's, that's really the, the vision. When we think of a healthy Loma Linda or a blue zone, we shouldn't have these images in our mind. And, and to respond to, to the mayor's question, to my colleague, Mr. Kraus, our, our request here is that we engage. And, and we're, a lot of us are public health folks. We don't know the, the necessary process on how to engage, so we're just waiting for that opportunity. So I appreciate the invitation to put this on the agenda, to meet with the, with a planning group, and, and we have a lot to share. We can share our public health background, and you can share your expertise as well. And I'd love to talk more about the whole ratio of fast food to, to healthy foods and , and healthy cities, but we'll leave that for a future discussion. Thank you. Just one more thing. The email that went out the night before the conference was just a reminder email. I sent that out. But there had been a previous invitation earlier on. I don't know if it was to the entire council, but I know at least some of you were invited. So hopefully next year, it's an annual conference, so hopefully next year we'll have representation. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Wayne Dicinger.
It's good to be here again, and can't say I'm totally comfortable yet, but this is the third time, and so the more times I come, the more comfortable it gets. So appreciate the opportunity to talk. And I just wanted to say a couple of things. Some of it's repeat, and some of it's hopefully maybe a slightly different emphasis, but, you know, I think one of the things that we're asking for is engagement. And there was discussion last month when we were here about how the developer's been working on this, and I know he's been working on it for years. But, but our group, we've been actively working on this for over seven months, so that's, that's a long time. And we've been looking for engagement. We've, we've sent emails, we've, we've done a lot of things. And it feels like what we've heard is, we can't talk to you, you know, we're, we're not allowed to talk to you, our, our lawyers say that, that we can't do this, we can't do that, you know, you, you can't talk on the agenda now, emails aren't answered. That's not what I'm used to for politicians. If I send a letter to, to a state senator or congressman, I, I always get a response back. And so I'm, we're asking for engagement, and, and maybe we haven't done that right. I'm sure that I could have done a better job of trying to engage myself, but, but I, we're, we're looking for that. We're looking for ways to sit down and to dialogue and, and to have a constructive way of moving forward. So that's, that's one thing is, is engagement. And so, so just following up what J.C. said. Another thing that, that I'm looking for, and I think that we as a group are looking for, is, is an acknowledgement that health is important. And we heard that, that we heard more than one council member acknowledge that health was important. An acknowledgement that the environment that we create in this community does affect the health of our community. I think it's no coincidence that McDonald's started in San Bernardino, and if you look at statistics as far as health, San Bernardino is one of the most unhealthiest cities in the whole state of California. And so, so we, we have a choice. We have a choice of creating an environment that's healthy, or we have a choice of, of letting whoever comes in and pays the $580,000 and sort of allows us to do, letting them come in and, and do that. But I would like to think that we can create the environment that we want that, that supports health. And as, as J.C. just showed, it's not, it's not about, to me, it's not about choice, it's about encouraging the healthy choice. And I, I know for myself, and I, I would guess, I mean, I, I practice medicine, I, I talk about this all the time with my patients, it's a very rare person who, when they're faced with a, with a potluck of, of choices, doesn't engage in the unhealthy choice on a regular basis. We want to, we don't want to take away unhealthy choices. That's, that's part of our, our right, part of, part of what we want to engage in at some level. But we would rather have the healthy choices be far easier to get at than the unhealthy choices. And that's just, that's just pure public health. That's, that's pure. And, and communities can choose to do that. They can choose to create that healthier environment. So, so those are the two things that, that we're looking for. One is engagement, showing us how to dialogue with you, showing us how to, to interact with you in a way that's constructive, and, and getting involved in the city planning. That's exactly what we want. I don't want to be having to go through this kind of thing again and again and again. And we can set up ways that, that we don't have to. It's, it's unfortunate, I wasn't here when Carl's Jr. came, and it's unfortunate that, that whatever happened there didn't work. Maybe, maybe the people at that point thought it was going to work, but, but it didn't. And, and so we, we need to, we need to change that. And then, so, so engagement and then acknowledgement that it, it does make a difference, the environment that, that we create around ourselves and our community as far as the health of our community. Thank you.
Just, just a quick comment. I guess for me, and the attorney probably doesn't want me to say this, but referring back to last month's decision, it, to me, it's not a decision about McDonald's, it was a decision about a development, and I tried to focus on that. And my, my mind was extremely open going into that meeting. But because McDonald's has been brought up so many times tonight, and as probably one of the only two vegetarians on the council, in fact, the two that voted for it, I don't eat at McDonald's. But I guess what I'm having a hard time reconciling in my head is that the relationship, the fact that the four of you that came up and spoke, or five, all work in public health for the university, correct? You don't. Okay, so four out of the five, two, three.
I, I work in the School of Medicine.
Okay. I, I guess what I'm having a hard time reconciling is it seems to be focused on McDonald's. And what I don't understand is the relationship between McDonald's and the university and the Ronald McDonald House right across the street from the hospital, and the money that's accepted back and forth, and all those other things. So I, I guess, not, not that I don't take what you're saying seriously, because I do, but I guess I wonder, are you out there picketing in front of that location? Are you hammering those people? Are you going to your administrators and saying, we need to run McDonald's house across the street out on a rail, because they represent everything that we cannot stand as an organization? So I, I, I mean, is it just focused on us as a city for, for decisions on development and planning, or is it focused on other areas of the community as well?
So we're, we're doing due diligence on Ronald McDonald's House. From what we can tell, Ronald McDonald's House has very little to do with, with McDonald's as a food corporation. So we're, we're doing due diligence on that and trying to understand that more. And as, as we get that sorted out, we'll figure out how to, to engage in that.
And I actually, by you saying that, I respect that, because that tells me this isn't just, that you really do care about the community as a whole in all aspects, not just what happens with city business, so.
And, and just, just to back up, I mean, I don't think I even mentioned McDonald's in my comments. To me, McDonald's is a symbol. McDonald's is a symbol, it's a very powerful corporation, they spend over a billion dollars every year marketing. Four, forty percent of that is, is spent marketing to kids. They're trying to get kids to eat what they, they serve. And they have shown a time and time again that as a corporation, they really care more about the bottom line than they care about health. And, and so it's, it's a symbol, but it's really not about it, McDonald's. It's about us creating a healthy environment in our, in our city. Loma Linda University right now is, has a prevention task force. So this is a task force that's led by Ruth Edifyk and Roger Hadley and, and the top people in the university right now. It so happens that J.C. and I sit on that task force. We're, we're looking for ways to, to share this issue with Loma Linda University. So we're not, it's not just about the city, it's like, you know, I mean, I, I've lived in the city, I was actually born in the city, but in this most recent stint, I've been here for eight years. I didn't, you know, I, I, it seemed like a pretty healthy city. I mean, the Lopers, I'm a member of the Lopers, and there's, there's the Whole City Hills Initiative. When it came to this food issue, I've been sort of thrown for a loop, because I, I expected that, that we as a city would have ways of engaging this, and, and it, it hasn't seemed that that's the case. So we're, we're trying to engage not only, I mean, I, I feel like I've primarily been interacting as a private citizen, and, and that's the, the main take I've, I've had so far, but it's pretty clear to me that, that we are going to need to engage, I'm going to need to engage as the Chair of Preventive Medicine at Loma Linda, not just as a private citizen. So, so we are trying to do that. And I don't know where it's going to go. I mean, it's, Mayor Rigsby's wife is also on that commission, and, and we're, we're obviously aware that McDonald's sponsored the Women's Health Conference that, that Loma Linda put on. And so there's, there's a variety of, of things that could be conceived as a, as a conflict of interest, and we're trying to sort that out ourselves, who made those decisions, why those decisions were made, and is, is it a decision that the university wants to keep making? And I don't know that for sure. I'd like to think that the university, the, the whole reason why this prevention task force is taking place is Loma Linda needs to raise a, a lot of money, $300 million, to create a new hospital. And they feel like the way they can do that is on the back of prevention. And this prevention task force is trying to figure out how to do that. Well, we can't do it on the back of prevention if Loma Linda's not a blue zone anymore. So I, I would think that the university and the medical center would be very motivated to keep Loma Linda looking as healthy as it can look. But, you know, all of those things are, are being played out, but it's, there's private citizen role and there's also a work role.
Just a very brief comment. I, I think that particularly in light of the last two comments, we all can agree on the outcomes that we're trying to achieve. Tactically, we need to sort out how we can, as you say, engage more effectively, and I think we also agree that now's the time to, to initiate that kind of dialogue and, and try to move forward with it. The, the second comment would be, the one element missing in all of the, the description of fast food restaurants and entry to Loma Linda and so forth, is we need some entrepreneurs that are willing to take the risk to create and operate healthy restaurants. I think that anyone that was willing to take that risk and develop a proposal would find a very friendly city council. But as, for the last year and a half, that I've been on the city council, we haven't seen such an initiative, and I'm not sure why. I think we also pointed out last month that there are several of us who have talked with restaurateurs in other cities that are vegetarian. And we have some challenges with our own demographics evidently, being so near to San Bernardino. So there are some hurdles that I think with the expertise from the School of Public Health and yourself, Dr. Dicinger, that perhaps we can collaborate on a strategy that would help us overcome some of those hurdles.
I just wanted to make a comment about, about the sense of non-engagement or betrayal of the process. The process really is not set up when it's in process for, for a lot of influence from the public. And when you talk about other politicians that, that don't act that way, I don't know of any state politician who sits in a quasi judicial status on any project. The only people that do that are local politicians, county and community. So we're not, when we're in that capacity, we're not traditional politicians. So that's, that's the reason you felt that kind of a brush-off. That, that the reason I've made the comment before, that you have to prevent these things before they even arise, is because we, we, once a project is in the funnel, are not amenable to public arguments outside public comment time. So that, that's why we were saying, you can't come to us and, and lobby us on this, because we're judges on this project. Now, as far as going forward and outlawing drive-up windows in the future, that is a legislative issue. The judicial issue is passed, now is the time to engage in the public forum. Talk to us. You'd be surprised how many of us are on your side on many issues. You know, don't get your back up yet until you find out what we really believe. When we serve as judges, we're not serving, serving as legislators. Now we're legislators going forward. And there's a whole panoply of options available to us that you guys would be delighted with. So we'd like to engage with you. It'd be interesting, I've read in the press that you're, you're engaging some attorneys to find out language. You don't have the budget. Okay, I understand. There are lots of, lots of things, the city can spend money on attorneys to develop all kinds of options going forward, whether it's something to do with a general plan, whether it's something to do with the, the Development Code, whether it's an outlawing a certain type of establishment through either a council initiative or a citizens initiative, or, you know, there are many different things we can do. So let's all talk about it. Now we're free to talk. The process was not set up for the approach that you guys had available at the time. And that's what we were saying, we're kind of stuck here. We couldn't really engage you, but now we can, let's go forward. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, you're quite correct regarding the distinction between a, an application that comes before you for an entitlement, that is what we call a quasi judicial determination, where there are due process rights that the applicant and the opponents share equally to have that matter determined in the public hearing based upon the evidence produced in the public hearing, not on outside influences or information which is not available equally to both sides in the public hearing. We are also limited by the Brown Act, which requires the city council to take action within the public meeting process. And that does prohibit council members from meeting together, either individually or in a serial-type meeting, or together, three or more, and reaching a consensus as to any action that would be on your agenda at a later date. And for that reason, we do have limitations on what might otherwise be considered lobbying, if there's an item that would be coming forward to the city council at a later date for determination, even if it's legislative in nature. If, if those lobbying obtain the concurrence of a majority of the council, that would constitute a violation of the Brown Act, which the legislature in its wisdom has exempted themselves from. So we have restrictions that apply to the city council that do not apply to the legislature, and we have to live within those restrictions.
I just want to make a quick comment. I agree with most, with most of what you said. However, no matter what decision comes before us, nothing precludes anybody from trying to contact us and expressing their viewpoint on it. I think it becomes a serious issue of freedom of speech that you can't even talk to your council member because someone has an application.
No, that's, that's correct, but it's when, when people ask council members for opinions or how they're going to vote, and they go around and try to get a majority in their pockets, so to speak, as to how they're going to vote at a future item, that's where a violation would occur. We try to avoid that and, and work through the public meeting process as required by the Brown Act.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on any item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Conflicts of interest will be dealt with as they arise. Item number one is a presentation to Alex Sanchez on the occasion of his retirement from the city. He's a field maintenance technician here since 1977, 34 years. And we have someone who would like to make a public comment about this. This is Dick Wiley. So you can start out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the first times that I met Alex was when we were building the water tank up on the hill. And I've seen him over the years with everything that's been done in this town in a wide variety of situations. And I'm speaking now from my own personal point of view and from being on the trails and the recreation parks and historic mission. They decided through the park and recreation to put trees at the bottom hill of Crooks Park so that we could hopefully put some space between that and the neighbors. And there were a lot of trees that were dug in one day. And there was Alex, got up there 10 o'clock and a morning, started putting trees in and helping with that. When it comes to a lot of the projects up there, he's been there to help with these projects, improve them. He's helped with, stepped down at Heritage Park now. I've seen him down there several times, working there. He helped with Rinmar Park. He's helped at Leonard Bailey Park. I've even seen him out there in the storm drains, pulling weeds, getting the weeds out so that things would go smooth. He's put a lot of time in this town, and a lot of people maybe driving around, don't know who he is, they're just one of those orange shirts out there. Hey, it's a city guy. Big deal. But I've even seen him with the fire department. We had a drill over on the corner, and he was one of the ones that was involved with the drill. We had hazardous materials incident. He was driving the truck that was involved in the incident. And so he's been involved in a lot of capacities, and after 34 years, he deserves a big thank you, and I'd like to thank you for the time and effort that he's put into it. He can be called out at any time. Tough luck. It's 2:00 in the morning. He can be called out. Most of us are going to curl up in bed and say, "I'm warm." He's out there. So Alex, thank you on behalf of this town and personally for all that you've done for the city, parks and everything else. You'll be missed.
Alex, can you come forward? Alex retired on December 2 after 34 years with the city. He joined the public work staff as a maintenance man through the Manpower Association's Comprehensive Employment and Training Act program in August of 1977. He promoted to senior maintenance worker in June 1989 and to lead maintenance worker in July 1991. At the time of his retirement, he was a field maintenance technician III and led the traffic safety department crew, taking care of and creating signs, banners and markings, striping streets and removing graffiti throughout the city. And for your many years of service, we have a token of our gratitude. The official city land. Thank you very much for your service. It's never been a more recognizable person in this city. And whenever I see you, I think of the service to the city, and we thank you so much and wish you the best in the future. Go. Okay. Item number two is a joint meeting. We've already called to order the redevelopment agency with the city regarding presentation of the audit report from Audit Firm of Caparichi and Larson. Ms. Lehman.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me present to you tonight. I wanted to present to you the results of this year's audit. So I'll go over responsibilities of the city, our opinion and responsibilities, the reports that were issued for fiscal 2011, which is the year ended June 30, 2011, other key points, and then if the council has any questions for me. So this slide just goes over the city's responsibilities when we, as the auditors, come out to do our audit work. The city is responsible to present the city's financial position and results of its operations fairly and in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles, required to adopt sound accounting policies, provide reasonable accounting estimates within the financial statements, establish and maintain good internal controls, which is obviously very important, and prevent and detect fraud. Our responsibilities as auditors for the city is obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. And I say material misstatement because we can't and do not look at every transaction. That would be impossible. We'd be out here all year round. So we have a materiality level that we use. Examine on a test basis evidence supporting amounts and disclosure. So again, we don't look at every transaction that the city enters into, but we statistically sample and try to represent a representative population of transactions to look at. We assess accounting principles used, estimates made, evaluate the overall financial statement presentation. We do review the internal controls, policies and procedures of the city, and then we ultimately express an opinion on the city's financial statements. Our opinion basically would state that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. Again, the word material comes up because we look at things from a materiality standpoint. We do look at significant accounting policies and make sure that they're consistently applied. We make sure that estimates within the financial statements are reasonable, and basically estimates are areas where you have to estimate amounts because you may not have exact dollars and that disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements. And so just to review for everybody, the reports that we issue on financial statements and on compliance over federal awards, I'll go over all three of them. So basically, the first one is the report on the city's basic financial statements. So obviously, everybody knows these are all available to the community on the city's website, or they'll probably be available soon. And so that's public information, and these are basically the city's financial statements. So they have all of the various funds, they have all the budget information, so everybody's free to look at that. We did issue what we call an unqualified opinion. I know it sounds confusing, but that is a good thing. That means it's a clean audit opinion over the city's financial statements. The second report is on the city's redevelopment agency. And basically, the redevelopment agency, if you look at the city's financial statements, you'll see a couple of funds within the financial statements on the government side that relate to the redevelopment agency, and it's called a, basically it's referred to as a blended component unit. And since it's a separate legal entity that has to report to the state of California, we also do issue an opinion on the separate financial statements of the redevelopment agency as a standalone basis. The third and final report that's significant to the city is called the Report on Single Audit. So for those of you who don't know what a single audit is, the Office of Management Budget in the mid to late 80s came out with a decision to take the audit responsibility away from all of the various agencies. So prior, what would happen with cities is you'd have the Department of Transportation, the Department of Homeland Security, what have you, each visiting every city and auditing compliance over the grant monies that the cities have received. And so you can imagine for a city, there was a revolving door of federal auditors coming in and out constantly, which could be very disruptive. So what the Office of Management Budget decided was to kind of bundle all those audits, if you will, into what they call the single audit. And they farmed that work out to private audit firms such as Caparichi and Larson. And so basically, what we do is we obtain from finance a listing of all of the grant monies that you've expended or the city's expended for the year, and then based on certain criteria, we'll test usually a majority of those grant dollars. So this year, we tested, there was 11 grants. We tested two, but we covered 77% of all those expenditures. And basically, this is the way to think about the importance of the single audit, is the city does receive federal dollars, and those are taxpayer dollars, and those dollars come from various agencies of the federal government. So our job is to make sure that the city is following on a compliance basis whatever those grant monies require. So if there's an eligibility requirement or a specific expenditure requirement or cash management requirement, those are the type of things that we test. So compliance is what we test, and then we also test for internal controls over the compliance. So again, a separate audit, separate report, and also for this report, we had no findings, which is a positive thing, no findings. And then just for everybody's benefit, you know, if a city does happen to have a finding, which means maybe they weren't in compliance with a compliance requirement or what have you, usually the government does not strip cities in general of funding. What they'll do is they'd like the auditor in the city to work on how to, you know, rectify that situation. But again, for Loma Linda, we had no findings, so again, a clean report, which is a good thing. So other key points, again, we'd just like to go over this. We have had no disagreements with management, no material errors or irregularities were discovered, no accounting issues, no material weaknesses in internal control over accounting, and no compliance issues were identified. So overall, a job well done by the city. And if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be willing to take this.
I don't have a question. Just a general comment that the Audit Committee did meet prior to closed session. The mayor and myself met with our accounting firm, and we did review this audit. And I believe, are we, Diane, you're not making another presentation after this, are you? You are. Okay. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. This one's more, I guess, for both staff and our auditing firm. I know in previous years on the Audit Committee, your firm has performed the audit for us and performed exemplary work, but I'm wondering, how long have we used the same firm since there's kind of general consensus out there? Every five or six years, it's good to change firms just because new things may be looked at or different styles may uncover different things?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but...
This is their fifth year, or six years.
At least something I think we need to keep in mind as we move forward. Don't think we need to make any immediate changes, but something to at least consider. The second question, there's been unfortunately a fair amount of publicity in local media and just general awareness in the community of problems with the San Bernardino International Airport Authority, FBI doing raids and alleging potentially mismanagement and fraud. You mentioned in your RDA report that we're a member as a joint venture with different entities. Is there any concerns that you would see financially, or is that firewalled, so to speak? Let's say, you know, again, this is wild speculation, have no idea, but obviously with those concerns out there, what if some big issue and financial fraud thing should pop up? I'm not alleging anything. I'm just saying, since FBI has been doing various investigations, there's at least that potential. Are we firewalled essentially for any potential liabilities if that should happen?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Diana, but my understanding is that they are not joint ventures. They are JPAs, which is a joint power agreement, meaning there's no equity interest of the city within these organizations. So it's more of a formed group, if you will. But I don't think you have any financial responsibilities either with any of these organizations, maybe small for some of them, but there's no...
Would be, I think there's one where they issued some debt where if for some reason their revenues were to go away, we could be potentially, but that's only to extinguish the debt, from my understanding.
It's just listed, at least on page 29 of the RDA report, as a joint venture, so I may not be using the correct term.
Yeah, that's one thing we noticed this year. It's some cities, you'll see them call it joint ventures. That was one of the things we actually had noted during our review, and we changed that description, at least within the CAFR report, but these were joint powers from what I understand. So no equity interest by the city in these entities. If there was an equity interest, then we'd actually take an additional step from an audit standpoint because we'd have to audit that investment interest that you have.
So if worst-case scenario should happen, again, not alleging anything, at least we would be, should be protected financially from any direct obligation.
I think you'd be open to any, you know, just like any, you could be open to litigation just, you know, you have a litigation footnote for, you know, operational litigation that comes to the city, you know, just because you're a city and it's part of doing business as a city, so.
As our previous city attorney, and I think our current one, has said when we'd ask about, will we be sued, anyone with $125 filing fee and a piece of paper can sue. And so I guess that's always true. The fee's probably way more than that now.
Just a comment about your earlier question. Caparichi and Larson, the audit firm, has been acquired by Markham LLP, and essentially, the Caparichi and Larson is a DBA, and it's not, it's really a new audit firm. So if that...
It's up to consider.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we need to do anything to receive the report, or is it just receive and file, or just let it?
I have my presentation that I was going to go through, just kind of highlighting the changes in net assets for...
Okay, go ahead.
Basically, as was mentioned by Sherry, these are the city's responsibilities that, you know, we have to, you know, adopt sound policies, do reasonable estimates, maintain our internal controls, and then hopefully prevent and detect any fraud within our organization. And then have our, in the main document, which is the combined statements for the city, you'll have the CAFR, which includes these sections in the CAFR. We have a letter of transmittal. We show our GFOA certificate. Every year, we apply for this excellence in reporting, and we've received it for several years now. We have, you know, principal officers and our org chart in the introductory section. We also have what's called the financial section, which has the independent auditor's report. We do a management discussion and analysis section, which kind of highlights some of the main issues, main revenue sources, changes in, you know, funding. So it highlights main aspects of what happened through the financial statements. And then we have the main financial statements. We have our government-wide financial statements. We have the fund financials, the notes, and we have some required supplementary information, and then our supplementary information. And then at the end, we have statistical sections that kind of show trends in some revenue sources, debt capacity... revenue sources, debt capacity, some of our geographics, and then some of our, and you can see some of the financial information for a period of 10 years. So we have, as Sherry said, we have the two main financial statements. We do the city, which combines all the funds and the redevelopment agency, and then we have the separate RDA statements. For the city as a whole, we actually show for the governmental funds, and then we have our business-type activities. This is our total net assets and deficits. We have no deficits, so we have positive net assets. The next slides will show kind of our operating for the year, and you can see that total, in total, the city had a net change in, a net asset change of a negative $444,000, $45,000. Just to clarify that, that was mainly in our business-type activities. If you look at the financial statements in the detail, you'll see for the governmental, we actually had a positive increase, and the main decrease came through our business-type activities with our, we had some, in the sewer fund, we had repairs and maintenance that we had to spin out of our reserves to do those. And then we also have in our LLCCP, which is our Connected Communities Program, there's still some funding and revenues that we need to address, revenue issues, so. For the general fund, this is the changes in fund balance. This year, we actually implemented a new fund balance classification per GASB 54. So you can see for the 2011, we had different categories that we had to report our fund balance in. When you compare it to 2010, where we only had, we reported it either as reserved or unreserved. In the note sections, there's actually a note where you can see the definition of what's non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. As you can see, now we have committed there, which actually, that's our rainy day reserve. So we did adopt, and council did adopt a policy, and we did identify that as our, basically our rainy day reserve. And then we have our general fund. This is the change in fund balance. So you can see here where our revenues and our expenditures and other financing sources and the result of operations. So for our general fund, we actually, result of operations, we're a positive $800,000. So that's a good thing for our general fund. This is our enterprise funds, and we just show the change in net assets at a fund level total. And here's where you'll see where we incurred the negative change in the net assets and the funds that were impacted. And then this is our RDA statements, and we basically reflect, have to report the net assets, and as you can see, we have negative net assets. That's because of the huge debt that's in these funds, and that's part of the RDA. We did reduce it, but I want to explain that that transaction was part of that whole land transfer, which will maybe be an issue we'll be addressing later with the results of the court decision on ABX 126. So just to kind of preface that. That's basically our financial statements. If you have any questions.
Yeah, I just want to take the opportunity to commend you, Diana and Jarb, on what I found to be an excellent report. I confess I didn't get through every page, but the letter of transmittal was very, very good description and summary of each of the, each of the different aspects that you reported on. I know it's a lot of work, and I assume you'll get the same certificate of achievement for excellent financial reporting for 2011.
We hope to. Well, I have to give a lot of credit to my accounting manager, Sonia Fabella. She works very hard on this document.
Very good. Congratulations as well.
Yes, thank you very much. I imagine we'll be getting a mid-year course correction, probably at the next council meeting because of multiple...
Probably not the mid-year budget at next council meeting, but it'll be adjustment due to the elimination of RDA, yes.
So I guess my own comment is, we do have good news for a few minutes, where we actually had, it's very unusual, and especially many cities in our county. I mean, the fact that we actually ended up with $800,000 positive, that's amazing. You know, most cities are running huge, huge deficits, and many of them are eventually going to have to pay the piper. We don't even have to talk about the state. The state is in even a bigger mess than most cities and counties. But anyway, I would echo Dr. Daly's commentary. We really appreciate the hard work of our staff, and sometimes even us as council members are overwhelmed with how complex and detailed the accounting process is for public agencies. And we're just laypeople who are, you know, put in this position to represent the best interests of the city, but we couldn't do our jobs without having faith that the staff we have is doing an excellent job of ensuring that everything's running tightly. So we do appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Just real quick, last number of years, you used to say our biggest challenge was dealing with the connected cities, since that's been a real financial issue for us. But now I think we can change our tune and say it pales in comparison to the RDA issues that we'll talk about in a minute. Sorry to get sidetracked, which I know I can, but I'm just curious on one thing that you have in your audit report, has a bar graph on page, Roman numeral two, city population from 2010 to 2011 looked like jumped significantly, almost, it's hard to read, but 800 or 900 people, I would guess. Is that due to census coming in, or, because I don't think we've had any real housing completed in the last year and a half, or, maybe my dates are slipping in my mind what time housing changed.
We actually get those from the State Department of Finance, and they do our population projections and...
Is some of that based on the census, potentially, or is it too early?
2011 is clearly the census numbers. So what it is, they projected what it was, and then the census corrects it once every 10 years, and that's probably what the 2011...
I guess that's probably good, quotes, overestimate. In some of our minds, we might get more funding, but anyway, just found that underestimating.
It helps with certain appropriations that are based on per capita.
Yeah, so they use their estimates for using, yeah, so that's good. We'd like them next time not to undershoot like they did the last round.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments on this item? Okay, then we'll move to item number three, another joint meeting. We have another public servant, Mark Hipsh, to give us some presentations here. Special counsel, this is about the elimination of our redevelopment agency by state law and confirmed by the Supreme Court.
Yes, I'll try to be brief. It's, as you all know, it's not good news. To briefly recap the staff report, the legislature enacted two separate bills, one to eliminate and dissolve redevelopment agencies, and another to allow agencies and their host cities to participate in a voluntary program. The dissolution bill, AB 26, was challenged in a lawsuit called the Matasantos case, as was 27. The outcome, which was the worst possible world for cities, was the Supreme Court upheld AB 26 dissolving agencies and overturned AB 27, which would have been the voluntary program. So the current state of affairs and current state of the law is agencies are earmarked for dissolution effective February 1, 2012. There are a few choices that agencies have. One is in respect to whether an agent, a city will serve as a so-called successor agency to a redevelopment agency. And the second relates to the disposition of those assets that the agency has accumulated that were acquired out of monies from its low and moderate income housing fund, also known as housing assets. There are a series of options that are presented in the staff report. The preferred alternative, as presented by staff and in which I concur, is that the city would adopt a resolution activating a housing authority of the city of Loma Linda, 1A. And 1B, it would adopt, the city council would adopt a resolution electing to have the city serve as a successor agency and designating the housing authority of the city of Loma Linda to receive the housing assets. There are other permutations of actions that could be taken, and I can explain those in more detail if you wish. But basically, our advice is that it's probably beneficial for the city to elect to serve as a successor agency. And as far as the repository for housing assets, we would, we think that it's appropriate to consider and recommend the use of a housing authority, which you would need to activate at this point for it to be your local housing authority. Be happy to respond to any questions.
I'll make a motion that we accept alternative number one as presented, adopting the council bill. Should we do them individually?
Yes, they do relate to slightly different matters where there could be a difference.
Okay. I'll make a motion on that we move Council Bill R-2012-03, establishing a housing authority.
I'll second that. Okay, is there any comment or discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Not really specifically on this, but just real quick, I really appreciate council providing us on the last page of the narrative, these five findings and alternatives. I find that very helpful and professional. Let's say, look, these are options, then give us the one you recommend, instead of just cut and dried one item or one recommendation. And so just want to personally thank you for that report with the findings and alternatives.
Thank you. I wish there were better choices.
Understand.
Okay, there being no further discussion, those in favor of the council bill that was moved, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. It's unanimous.
Move Council Bill R-2012-04 on the successor agency.
I'll make a second, and then a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
And this is just for the general public. What this means in layman's terms is actually yet another loss of revenue to the city ultimately, which is going to cost us in some way. If you remember last year, we ended up cutting our budget, and that cost us some positions and some programs and things like that. And that ultimately, because of what the state has done, that's going to affect us again, before we even get up to the next year's budget. So unfortunately, it is a very bad thing, and it translates to bad news for us. Probably a lot worse news for other cities, but bad news for us also.
I would echo that, and actually go into a little bit more detail. Basically, what the governor has done is basically, at this point, affected our city to the tune of $1.6 million. That is significant for us, and unfortunately, we're going to have to try to address that. There are going to be other cities that will basically go bankrupt, and it's sad. And, you know, I'm, it's not only sad, I'm really frustrated that we're having to deal with this, because it boils down to politics. People put him into power, they want to make sure they protect their jobs, their pensions. He doesn't have enough money, and the cities have money. So they're basically robbing Paul to pay Peter, and it's sad. And it's a sad day for our country as well, but for our state, because I truly believe that. And I've, you know, as the RDA chair, I've been paying special attention to this whole battle, and many have stated that when the state further deteriorates, they're going to look back at this decision and point to this decision as to why the state never recovered, because this is going to affect 400 different agencies throughout the state, 400 different cities, because many of you may not realize that our finances are very much related to the RDA. And without the RDA, we can survive, but it's going to make it much more challenging to meet the needs of our community. We want to always provide better services, better roads, better parks. That requires some development. Sometimes development is not easy in a state that's full of regulations, as you can see as our prior decisions, that there's an extensive effort for someone to get something approved that followed a number of rules, and that becomes very costly. So sometimes it does require a public-private partnership between public agencies and private investors to get certain projects done, because it is so cost prohibitive with all the regulations we have. Well, now, the governor has taken that away from us, and I think it's conceivable in our city, we may have tens of millions of dollars of projects that will not be done. It's just, they won't be done, and that's going to be loss of jobs, loss of tax revenue, and it's a really, really sad day for our state.
And just let me further comment that in regards to the issue you brought up, the last issue we had to deal with, there's, I wish that Group One member stayed, but I wish the rest of the group had stayed. To hear that the city isn't just about making specific decisions on certain things, that there's such a vast purview that we have here of things that are going on and issues, and it's hard, and it's almost harder to look at some of those positives, such as spending money on healthy cities and things like that, when we may have to eliminate jobs, and we could lose public safety positions and things like that because of loss of income coming into the city. And those are the things we have to balance. Again, I wish more of the group had stayed to listen to some of this stuff, too, as boring as it is. But that's the entire picture as a whole. So when we represent the public's health, it goes beyond just what they put in their mouths. It goes into how, what services we can provide for them also.
I guess can't resist venting a little bit, too, and it, for me, is frustrating, just like it is for everyone up here, and every council member of every city around. The frustration is that for, you know, approximately 30-plus years, every city has planned their financial picture with a centerpiece using RDA activities and different projects to advance different projects in their city. And I think if you look around, our city's a prime example. You point out to me any quotes, abuse of RDA funds. I think frankly, you'd be hard pressed. We've used them for numerous infrastructure projects, numerous things that are beneficial to the city. Yes, there's abuses out there, but I just find it outrageous that the governor and the legislature, in one fell swoop, literally almost overnight, this ruling was what, Jan, or, excuse me, December 29th, and we're forced to make a decision tonight based on these findings, instead of at least, if you have a problem with RDAs and so forth, fine, give it a reasonable phase-out to let cities adapt and provide changes. But this is just grossly unfair, and I don't think the average public has any idea what the governor and legislature's done to us, but unfortunately, we're going to find out real soon.
Okay, I think we were in the middle of a motion and a second on Council Bill R-2012-04. Is there any further comment? Okay, those in favor, say aye. Oppose no. Okay, that's unanimous, it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will be back at the next meeting with a resolution of the housing authority forming officers and adopting a conflict interest code, and there'll probably be an amended enforceable obligation. Payment schedule in front of you, and there may be a resolution indicating that the agency is not forgiving debts owed to the agency due to a very odd law that passed in September that required such a finding.
Quick question. Do you know when we should make a decision about appointing someone from our city to that governing board?
As far as an appointment to the oversight board, we're continuing to study... As far as an appointment to the oversight board, we're continuing to study, to study the ramifications of those appointments, so I would hold off for now till we can conclude that.
Okay.
That work. Thank you.
Thank you. And so the redevelopment agency continues through the end of the month to exist?
It is comatose till the first of February, at which point it dies.
Okay. Thank you. So I was, I was asking that because I wanted to know if, if Chairman Hopesku is dethroned at this moment or if it has to wait till February 1?
I would confess that I'm among the many aspects of this unprecedented and fairly miserable legislation, that was one facet I had not studied.
Okay.
In the interest of saving the city money, I will not get any new business cards. I will remain with the same business cards that has me as chairman.
You will, of course, strike out before you hand those out, correct?
It reminds me of some story in the news today. There's some offbeat candidate for a president that was talking about dealing with the issues of zombies and so forth. Maybe he had RDAs in mind and didn't realize it.
We do have an idea now that, now that you raised the question, a sign that says agency chairman might be retained for use in connection with conduct of business of the successor agency.
I know, I still have some power left. Thank you.
Okay, now we move to the consent calendar. Is there any opinion on that?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Are there any reports of councilmen? Seeing none, are there any officers' reports? Seeing none, the city council is adjourned and we move to the redevelopment agency in its penultimate meeting.
We already addressed items number one and two when we had a joint meeting. We'll go on to the minutes for December 6th and the 13th, 2011.
Move them both.
And they've been moved by Mayor Rigsby. Seconded. Hearing no opposition, so approved. Any reports? Seeing none, we are adjourned in our next regularly city council meeting, which will be January the 24th. Thank you.
Thank you all for attending. You're dismissed.